Chris, do we have a form, please?
Mayor Moss, President. Congressman Gillian, President. Congressman Moss, President. Mayor Priton Young is present.
Thank you. This time, would we all please stand? Pastor Matt Lance from Cross Chapel is going to give the invocation and lead us in the pledge, please.
Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful for this city and for all the gifts that you've given us. We get to live here. I pray for our meeting this evening. You give us wisdom and guidance and humility as we consider the needs of this great community, how we can work together to achieve and make it a better place. Father, we thank you so much for those who serve and care for our city. Ask that you continue to protect and provide for us. Give us peace and prosperity. We ask in peace and safety.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a couple of public comments. Our first one is David Lorenzo. If you come forward, please state your name and address, please.
Is this for the public?
Yes.
Is this for the public hearing on the?
It is, but unfortunately, I have to go. I have an emergency, I have to take care of, so if you don't mind. Yeah, I appreciate it. My name is Dave Lorenzo. I'm from, I live at 133 San Bass Road. And I have come armed with a petition signed by many of the residents in the San Bass and Ranch House area, as well as Willow Park. We're calling attention to your, I guess, consideration of a PD that is being presented tonight for approval that came from the planning and zoning. Our particular issue is with the allowance of a school. The school itself, we're not particularly objection, objecting to, but unfortunately, if we have somewhere on the border of seventy or eighty cars, seventy or eighty students being picked, dropped off and picked up, there's no accommodation for that at that intersection and at that church. There's no turnaround, there's no queuing lanes, there's no way that this city can handle that twice a day for upwards of forty-five minutes just to drop off the kids and pick them up. So we either have to limit the size of that school specifically in this PD to twenty persons, twenty kids or less, or eliminate it from the PD altogether. Because we cannot handle that. Because it'll block Ranch House going both north and south, as well as have queuing lanes up and down San Bass Road and people trying to make a left-hand turn into that property where there's no turnaround possible. But we can envision that that parking lot will be full of teachers and staff. There won't be any place to turn around for this thing. It will be a disaster for this city if we decide to have a school of any size there, okay? So I have the petition. We'd appreciate you taking that into consideration and noting our objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clifford. Are they speaking to the public hearing?
There's three public.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Clifford Voorhees. I live at 116 San Bass Road. I'm here today to, yesterday I was out collecting names and talking to our citizens. And Opel Dale lives on eleven hundred San Bass Road. She's elderly, only because she's older than me, and not, there's not too many people that are. But anyway, she's got a tree branch that's been down and she's tried to contact this office without any response. She came down here to talk to somebody, and I, I'm sorry that I didn't get the name, but whoever took her info said I'll give it to the person that needs to come contact you about the limb, about the tree being picked up and disposed of or whatever that the city is, is up. But anyway, she never got a call back. So I told her I would bring that up today. I do want to say I'm excited about San Bass Road. It looks nice. My question is, is it going to be hydro seeded or is it just going to be grown on its own? And the other thing is the drainage ditch between San Bass and Stagecoach. When it has rung here, if you watch the cooling, it, in the middle of the, between the two, two roads, it cools in there and it gets to a certain level, then it flows. Unfortunately, when it gets to Stagecoach, instead of braring left, it veers right towards the back property of one thirty-three San Bass. I'd just like somebody to look into that and see if they can maybe rectify that to get the water to go this way instead of that way. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Glenn Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity. So I'm the state representative for House District sixty, which includes Parker County. It's my first term representing Parker County, my second term in the Texas House. We had the most conservative session in Texas history. The last two sessions have actually fit that category. We passed property tax cut of eighteen billion dollars, the largest in Texas history. And hopefully all of you saw the benefit of that. As far as the border, we allocated six point six billion dollars for more boots on the ground for the Texas Military Department, DPS, continue building the wall. We enhanced penalties for fentanyl, enhanced penalties for human trafficking, stash house operation, and then passed the strongest bill ever passed by a state that would actually make it a felony to illegally cross into the U.S. and they can be deported back to Mexico. One of the things that I, that I wanted to mention also is I'm, I'm on the Natural Resources Committee and I serve as Vice Chair of Land and Resource Management on the, on the committee for bills that were local in consent. And it's really important that you have someone with experience in this office and especially important for, for this fast-growing area. And I have an opportunity to stay on those committees, Natural Resources over all of water, and certainly Land and Resource Management is one that, that would very much involve Parker County. Just really quickly, one thing that happened this session is we voted on an omnibus education bill, HB one, that included, that included school finance, teacher pay raises, as well as funding for school security and a voucher. And I was one of the twenty-one Republicans that voted to strip that voucher bill off of HB one. And that was after certainly a lot of research on my part as to looking into vouchers and I had hundreds of comments back from this county. And, and it was overwhelmingly, eighty-eight percent of the comments that I received back were against vouchers. So I felt like I was voting my district. Vouchers are not conservative and I, you know, we talk a lot about the damage it would have to rural communities. I know we're not rural anymore, but people are coming to Parker County for our great public schools. And it would be, it would be a real travesty to have particularly a universal voucher program implemented. And so that's, that's the reason I, I voted the way I did and I certainly stand behind that. You've probably seen, we've taken a lot of heat from that vote. And ultimately, though, there are only two ways you can support a voucher program. You either raise taxes or you defund our public schools. And there are people that want to completely privatize our public schools. You may have read an article about Tim Dunn in Texas Monthly. He was on the cover of that, Tim Dunn and some other billionaires have that as their goal, to completely privatize our public schools. And that, and basically destroy public education. And that would be a huge loss to Parker County to allow, to allow that to happen because that's why they're coming to Parker County for, is their great public schools. So who's, so who's behind the mailers that, that you're seeing? You're seeing just tremendous number of negative mailers, false negative mailers, mostly coming from organizations like the School Freedom Fund and the American Federation for Children. American Federation for Children is, is a Betsy DeVos-funded group. She's a billionaire. How much time? One minute? Okay. So I just, it's, it's, it's really a travesty, the amount of lies that are being told about, about me in those mailers from that group, as well as from those funded by Wilson Dunn, like the Ben Texas Liberty and all their various organizations. And the names change often, they're rebranded. But I, I just wanted you to be aware of, of, of my service in the Texas House and what committees I'm on and what I intend to do. Experience matters. And I think it's really important for Parker County that we have an experienced voice in Austin. And I'm, I have high hopes of actually having a chairmanship when I get back to Austin. That would certainly benefit, benefit Willow Park, benefit this county. So with that, I'm out of time and I'll, I'll stop and I know you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you can't ask questions, but certainly I can talk again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First item on the, on the agenda is to approve the city council meeting minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion, please? Take a motion to approve the minutes for our past meeting of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions or discussion?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, ordering the cancellation of the general election scheduled for May fourth, twenty twenty-four, declaring the unopposed candidates for council members for place number three, a council member for place number four, and a council member for place number five to be elected to office directing, directing the city secretary to take certain actions pertaining to the cancellation of the general election, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and providing an open meetings clause. Do we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, ordering the cancellation of the general election scheduled for May fourth, twenty twenty-four, declaring the unopposed candidates for council member for place number three, a council member for place number four, and a council member for place number five to be elected to office, directing the city secretary to take certain actions pertaining to the cancellation of the general election, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and providing an open meetings clause.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor, hopefully you will have those unopposed candidates be supporting the municipal meeting for their next term.
Thank you. Item number three. To reappoint Board of Adjustments members places, place number two and four, and appoint an alternate. We have in your packet a recommended motion.
Mr. Mayor, we have a recommendation from staff. Steve Gold at place two, Mike Barron at place four, and the following applicants recommended for board appointment, Scott Smith as an alternate, and this is for the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of all board members and appointment of alternate as stated.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to reappoint Parks Board members places two, four, and six, and appoint an alternate.
Council, we have the following Park Board members for reappointment. Corey Tucker for place two, Ever Gomez for place four, Cynthia White for place six, and Barry Noggle as the alternate.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment and appointment of all place members and alternate as stated.
Do we have, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to reappoint planning and zoning commissioners places two, an alternate, and appoint place four and second alternate.
Council, we have the following names for your consideration. Scott Smith for place two, with Zach Walker as the alternates, and new applicants for Tyler Van Zant for place four, and Ever Gomez as the alternate.
Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we, on the planning and zoning that we appoint as stated.
Second, please?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
No background check on Van Zant?
Next item, we have a public hearing to consider requests for zoning change from class two residential R one, single-family district to class one special purpose. PD Plan Development District for seven twenty-one Ranch House Road, Lot one, Block one in the Willow Park Church of Christ Edition, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. We have a couple of public comments here. Mr. Chad Dotson.
You want to open it at six seventeen?
Yes.
Pardon?
Open the meeting, sir.
Yes. Open the meeting at six sixteen P.M. Thank you. Mr. Dotson, please state your name and address, please.
Chad Dotson, I'm at twelve thirty-six San Bass Road. Here to oppose changes on from R one at this location to PD. They had been given special consideration for a church to be built there. Otherwise, housing would be there, residential. The second part of that is also the traffic that's going to be coming in there and that's going to congest everything. It's really going to disrupt the lives of the people that live really close to this area. The other thing I want to mention is sometimes when you think you're doing something that's right, it might actually be, might not be the right thing. But you might, when you look behind you and you see the people that you affect, because they're all laying on the ground behind you, you boat over them. So I think it's a bad idea to change this. We're mostly in a residential area and we're not going to be able to handle it. Even Council Leah Young is going to be affected by this. So I propose that we all deny it and reject it. And either it needs to stay in R one and make the church into a big house or some other solution because it, it wasn't R one and it was given special consideration for a church built in there. So if the church wasn't there, probably a couple of houses would be sitting there. Give back my time to the council. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
Thank you. Walt Owen, did I say that right?
Yeah, Owen.
Owen?
Yeah, one thirty-two San Bass Road. About this rezoning, re, whatever you want to call it. You know, it, it is a neighborhood and I don't know that people are buying it. Could be y'all, I guess, I don't know. But when you go in and start changing neighborhoods up, you're changing everybody's lives. They may, you know, I know people may not live out there, but a lot of people go by it. A lot of people live on San Bass. I just think that with all the hassle, they started out, everybody's kind of had an agreement, well, they'll do this, they do this, do that, and then I understand, no, they're going to do this, this, and that, which I don't know what this and that is, but I just think we ought to leave it where it's at. It's, it ought to be a neighborhood, a residential, not a business. Even though it may not be a big bank or whatever, it doesn't really matter. A neighborhood's a neighborhood, not commercial neighborhood unless it's that way. But I think we ought to leave it and don't mess with it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Clifford. Voorhees.
Voorhees, yes.
Voorhees.
Or like, he's the only good fellow? Yes. My name's Clifford Voorhees. Again, I live at one sixteen San Bass Road. I'm here today to talk about the possibility of you approving them to have a school. The school, again, as Dave stated, and with the amount of property and the ins and outs and the congestion would be, I think it would be a bad idea to have more than twenty. I would like the, the board to consider, the council to consider that we either, like Dave said, amend it to a twenty or take it off completely. Also have a update for Crystal for the petition with added names to give you and also have the thing that I spoke on earlier to give to Crystal. And I, I'm just going to tell you, I'm not good with change. Best case scenario, I would like to see it be another church. In my heart, praying for it, I got no answer. But they're all my friends and I just can put the burden, burden on the council to do the right thing.
Thank you. Justin Holcomb.
Hi. My name's Justin Holcomb. I'm at one oh eight San Bass, directly across the street from the church. I feel like at the last zoning meeting, the school was put in there and I'm completely against having a school in this area. As you know, the parking lots are very small. There's two parking lots on each side of the building. They don't connect. I feel like a car would pull in there, you'd have to park, turn around. It, it's just not a feasible operation for that location. I, I don't know what y'all would do with the traffic. If there was a school there, there'd be so many cars coming and going, it would back up all the way to the lake in both directions. What would be the next follow-up to that? Would you put a stoplight in there? There's just a, I think that would just be too much for that intersection. I've got a lot of feelings about it. I moved to this city, I love this city. I just don't think that's the right place for a business or a school. I appreciate you letting me talk tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stacy Lynch.
Good evening, Mayor Moss, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to you tonight. On January twenty-third, after this, this city council had tabled the original request from R one to commercial, we were asked to meet with the citizens and we did. We obliged by that. We went, we had a list of, I would say, ten items, maybe ten to fifteen items on the list and we sat probably for two hours here at the city hall, went over each item. And the only thing they said they didn't want was a wedding venue. And so basically what we did is we agreed to change this to a PD, went through the process of, of that process. They never said anything about a school or, or any other thing other than a wedding venue. The reason I put a school in there, and it was before we presented the PD to the, to the P and Z, was because we've had some different private schools that are looking in the area. They, they're not large schools, they're very small schools. We can't get seventy cars in there because there's not seventy parking spots and the city of Willow Park isn't going to allow seventy cars in an area that doesn't have a parking space. So, I mean, we're happy to limit it to how many parking spots are on, on location. I feel, I feel, you know, I don't know that it's going to be a school. It probably will be an office building. But the, the deal is, if it is a school, they're not on, they're not open at night. There's no nighttime traffic, there's no lights, there's no, there's nothing like that. They would. that that would, that would offset, like, the things that were heavily they were considering was lighting, and we agreed to all that. We agreed to everything on the list. The only thing we didn't agree with was security cameras around our property, because we felt like every single house has rings now, and we felt like we had the right to secure our property also. We would like to ask for you to accept the PD as is, as the P and Z had approved it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, ask Stacy, what's the square footage of the buildings?
Seventy-four and some change.
Forty-six hundred and twenty-four.
What was that again, Tony?
Forty-six hundred and twenty-four.
Thank you. How many parking spots? You mentioned that, do we know how many spots are out there?
Probably forty.
Do I have any time left?
You got a minute.
Okay. So, when we first started this, I went to that church, and I didn't want to see it torn down. I mean, I was baptized there, my grandparents were buried there, I've been with, I was there all of my high school years. I didn't want to see it torn down, I wanted to see it reused and re-implemented into something that the community here could use for local businesses here, for local families to be able to open their business here in Willow Park, in the great town of Willow Park, and be able to expand in this great town. I mean, we all here like to be able to live here, work here, play here, and that was the only reason that we even made the decision to do this, was to make this building be something that the community could use.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed at 6:26 PM. Thank you all. Item number seven, to adopt an ordinance for zoning change from class two residential R1, single-family district to class one special purpose. PD Plan Development District for 721 Rancho House Road, lot one, block one, in the Willow Park Church of Christ Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Evening, Mayor Moss and council. As Stacy had said, this went to the council last month with the condition of, from P and Z for the conditions for zoning, and the city council presented it with a petition, excuse me, and the council postponed the item with no action. City staff organized a town hall meeting, and on February 8th, the applicant and owner withdrew the zoning change application, and the subject planning development application was submitted, outlines permitted and non-permitted uses for the property, and addresses specific items of concern from the residents. On February 20th, the P and Z commission conducted a public hearing for this zoning change request. Following their public comments, Planning and Zoning Commission approved the PD with a two-to-one vote, with the conditions of required parking section 1.04B1 to read "commercial and industrial vehicles," and signage requirements, section 1.09 to include "digital signs are prohibited." These changes are reflected in the revised document presented to the city council, and city staff recommends approval of the zoning change request as permitted. There was a petition presented this afternoon from Mr. Lorenzo that I've made a copy and given to council, that contains a 20% of the adjacent property owners as required for supermajority vote per city attorney.
Okay. Any questions for Tony?
Can you give me kind of a history, I guess, like, as far as, if approved, whoever comes in next, how, whatever potential plans they have, will have to go through city for approval? Like, anybody is welcome to purchase it, but obviously, if you're planning to operate any businesses, things like that, there are certain other standards that we as the city have to see as well. We just can't say, okay, you have it as a open venue, we need business plans, something like, can you explain some of that process as well, and what could potentially?
Yes, for renovation, they do have to come in for city permits for renovation of building, which they will. It's a change of use, and any renovations, it will need to come up to code for whatever that is. So, if it's a school, or if it's office building, or whatever it is, that has to come up to code for whatever that renovation is, to make any structural changes, which they'll be doing. So, that will be the one thing. It's under office as far as the PD is concerned, so that would, I believe that flips to what our ordinance is for uses that are allowed in there, and then adding the private school as per the PD. So, that is your zoning.
The school itself, if it was a school, would not be within the office designation, or it would?
It could coincide.
It could still coincide with that.
As long as it meets the zoning requirements as far as the code is concerned, because that changes when you're involving a school.
Right.
What, do we know what kind of school? Are we talking pre-K? Are we talking?
Like, we were talking office building, it was just put in there because it wasn't under the office.
Okay.
We're not even talking any school. It's not even a school, it's just now become a point.
Any other questions for Tony?
I had a question on the petition that was turned in today. Does it have to be a city resident signature in here?
It has to be the 20%.
Well, anybody could sign a petition for purposes of this council. If 20% of the adjacent property owners to the property being rezoned have signed, and they have, we figured that out, five out of the eight adjacent properties owners.
Okay, okay.
That requires a supermajority.
If we met the numbers, that's fine, I just noticed it's Fort Worth and Weatherford.
No, I mean, they can sign it, they just, it doesn't count for purposes of the number.
Any other questions for Tony?
How long has that property been vacant now?
Well, it hasn't been vacant. Well, it didn't go vacant until after we went under contract.
I'm sorry, what?
Until we went under contract, it will still be operated as a little property for us.
So, it's been, how long has it not been occupied? I guess is the better question.
One month.
One month? Pat, can you walk through, just for the record, what the 20%, what the petition requires, the 20%, and lay that out for council, please?
Yeah, it, our statute, which is our ordinance, which follows state law, which basically gives adjacent property owners a right to protest or petition against a zoning change such as this. So, there is eight adjacent property owners to the property being proposed for rezone, and of course, eight of those people, five of those have signed that petition. So, it meets the 20% requirement. Therefore, we have to vote a supermajority, which based upon this number, four council members will have to vote, which is all council members will have to vote to pass this change.
Okay.
Is that, isn't that a normal requirement anyway?
No, it's a majority vote unless.
Okay. It's for, it's a supermajority to overrule P and Z?
Correct.
Yeah. I had that backwards. Did this come with a favorable recommendation from P and Z? You may have said that in your report.
Yes, they approved it two-to-one with the recommendation, the required parking change to "commercial and industrial vehicles," and that they include "digital signs are prohibited." Those are the only two changes that they recommended.
What were those changes for the industrial vehicles, again?
It was that, I think originally that it had large, it had the word "large" in it, and they felt as though that was potentially, that one of the comments, that they received a petition for P and Z as well, and their petition read that "large" was too ambiguous, and so they wanted to be specific to all "commercial" vehicles. So, they changed that to being "commercial and industrial vehicles of any kind," and then for the, they also asked for the digital signs to be prohibited, and so P and Z approved that as well.
Okay. Any other questions for?
I have a question, and I don't know if you'll know the answer, Tony, but maybe somebody here might know. What was the average, what was the congregation attendees at the church?
Over the last year, fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah. During this, I came to that meeting on the 23rd, it was, I thought when we left there, we had hit all of those bullet points, and were they not all met when we left that meeting, other than the camera?
Yes. There was, just the camera one was the only one that was outstanding in the comments, and another petition was given to P and Z.
Okay. Everything on that, I mean, I know there's overnight vehicles, things like that?
Yeah, that's in your packet, and, let me find it really quickly. Okay, so, what was submitted there stated, under paragraph 1.02, permitted uses, sub-paragraph A, permitted uses remove, a school could not, remove private school. A school could not be supported due to traffic flow limitations, there's no option to provide a pickup and drop-off lane in the property without having traffic back up on the city streets. This was his rebuttal when he forwarded it back to me. Paragraph number two was under paragraph 1.02, permitted uses, sub-paragraph, non-permitted uses to add, number five, any business provided service, such as legal, counseling, rehabilitation, et cetera, for the following classes of client, drug abuse, sex abuse, crimes of theft or violence. And number three, under paragraph 1.04, required parking, sub-paragraph A, no overnight or weekend parking of the following vehicles. Changes the sub-paragraphs to read, number one, service vehicles, i.e. cars, vans, or trucks; number two, wrapped or advertised vehicles; number three, transportation buses; number four, under paragraph 1.04, required parking, sub-paragraph B, no parking at any time of the following vehicles, remove the word "large" from sub-paragraph one; and number five, under paragraph 1.09, signage requirements, add no digital screen type sign is permitted. And so of those five requests, P and Z agreed on the "commercial and industrial vehicles" and "digital signs are prohibited." They didn't feel comfortable with the non-permitted uses for the service providers.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I don't know that I have any questions per se that would go to this. Definitely torn as far as there's valid arguments to both sides. I'd say as a, as a realtor in the state of Texas, I don't, I recognize your right to want to keep it residential, but with everything around it, the cost-effectiveness, unless you're retrofitting a church to be a home, I don't see it. So, in my opinion, then you're looking at either the office or church use. Church, are we good with any church, any denomination, any religion? Are we good if this church thrives? If they have 100 people coming every Sunday, VBS packing it out? We have, you know, some churches will do Sunday morning, Sunday night, Wednesday night, and now you're not looking at your weekday school traffic, and your office traffic, you're looking at an opposite. So, I think that, you know, anything that you put there, you would want it to thrive and be a good, a good use to the community, but I think you're, you're in a, we're in a unique position, as it's not, it's not a clear-cut decision either way, so.
Is that a motion?
I think, I think Pastor Hale said it best at the meeting we were at, in that, I think it's fair to say that the church has been struggling for a number of years, your congregation has dwindled down. If another church is planted there, he said, he made a very great point in that meeting, which is, the first thing they're going to do is go for kids. So, there's going to be some kind of Mother's Day out, which is ironically enough, right next door. You're going to see playground equipment, you're going to see things that are wanting to have youth there. The other thing they're going to do is they're going to cater to their seniors, he brought that point up as well. So, you're going to see a church van parked there at all times, probably a carport of some sort. And so, the church, and I drive by that church every day, now that San Bass is open, thank God. I get to drive by that, I drive that route every day, and I see it. I drive by every single one of your houses. And Pastor Hale and Councilman Crum will make a valid point. What you see today is probably not what you're going to see in the future, one way or another. It's going, there will be change. I mean, it's not going to be a residence. No one's going to pay half a million bucks for the building and tear it down, and then build another half a million dollar home. That's just simply not feasible for that, for that corner. If it is a church, and Pat, I think I'm correct on this, if it is a church of any denomination, whether it be a synagogue, or a mosque, or a temple, this council is powerless to stop that. It is, churches of any faith, of any denomination can be put anywhere in any zoning. That's, that's going to change things up a little bit, too. And I'm not saying it's good, and I'm saying it's bad, but it is something that should be considered. I don't think keeping, I don't think housing is reasonable. If there was somebody who was going to put a house there, they probably would have already made a move to do that. So, the question before the council today is, do you change it to a PD, which is pretty stringent, could or could not have a school there, could or could not have business office space there? And, you know, a PD is pretty restrictive. We have a lot of authority and control over it, it's not just plain zoning where you pass it and then it goes. That's the question that you guys have before you. You have a recommendation from P and Z, you have a favorable recommendation for that? But I think you're correct, Nate, this is not an easy decision.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the zoning change from class two residential R1, single-family district to class one special purpose PD Plan Development District for 721 Rancho House Road, lot one, block one, in Willow Park Church of Christ, in Willow Park Church of Christ Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to consider a request for zoning change from class two residential R1, single family district to class four industrial-commercial, lot industrial district for the Haney Complex Edition, tracks one-three, being approximately 31.247 acres, in the Eliza Oxford Survey, abstract number 1031, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Thank you. Mayor and council, the property was annexed into City of Willow Park on January 9th, 2024. The property owner submitted a zoning change application for rezoning of the entire subject property from class two residential R1, single-family district to class four commercial LI light industrial zoning district for the purposes of development. The P and Z commission conducted a public hearing for this zoning change request on February 20th, and following public comments, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zoning change as presented with a two-one vote. City staff recommends approval of the zoning change request as presented.
Public hearing was open at 6:40 PM? Are there any other comments? Public hearing is closed at 6:42 PM. Next item, to adopt an ordinance for zoning change from class two residential R1, single-family district to class four industrial-commercial, L1 light industrial district for the Haney Complex Edition, tracks one-three, being approximately 31.247 acres, in the Eliza Oxford Survey, abstract number 1031, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Any questions for Tony on this, please? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance as read.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Public hearing to consider request for a special use permit regarding the addition of a roller skating rink as an allowable use of lot three, block three, in the Haney Complex Edition, which is currently requesting a zoning change from class two residential R1, single-family district to class four industrial-commercial, L1 light industrial district in the City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Public hearing opens at 6:45 PM. Is that you, Ms. Tony? Sure.
This was run concurrent with the zoning change to the light industrial for a special use permit application for an indoor roller rink on lot number three. Parking requirements are one space per 100 square feet of floor space for indoor. Parking requirements are one space per 100 square feet of floor space for indoor commercial amusement use, which would require 316 spaces. Staff requested that Mr. Haney install approved surfacing on Lot 2 to create substantial additional parking. In addition, fortified fitness and future complex development to the south will also provide availability for additional evening parking. P&amp;Z Commission conducted a public hearing for this request on February 20th. Following public comments, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zoning change with a requirement for additional parking on Lot 2 as presented with a two-to-one vote. City staff recommends approval of the zoning change request with this requirement for an additional parking on Lot 2 as presented.
Thank you. Public hearing closes at 6:46 PM. Next item, to adopt an ordinance of the City of Willow Park, Texas, amending the zoning Class IV Industrial Commercial L1 Light Industrial District to grant a special use permit to include indoor roller skating rink for the Haney Complex Edition Lot 3 in the Eliza-Oxer Survey Abstract Number 131, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for separability and providing for, for effective date. Any questions for Tony or do we have a motion, please?
Question, does this need to also include the additional parking? Is there a motion in it?
No, it's, it's in the.
It's in there. I saw it in there. I just want to make sure it doesn't need to be included.
Yeah, now just pass the ordinance as read.
This is, you have the updated ordinance in front of you.
Do we have to read the ordinance or?
Yeah, it'd be good to read the caption of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Willow Park amending its comprehensive zoning ordinance and map, Chapter 14 of the Willow Park Code of Ordinances by approving an amendment to the zoning district, Class IV Industrial Commercial LI Light Industrial District to grant a specific use permit to allow for use of property described as the Haney Complex Edition, Lot 3, in the Eliza-Oxer Survey, Abstract Number 1031, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, for an indoor roller skating rink, approving specific use permit standards, providing a separability clause, providing a penalty clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this time, we're going to executive session. Items, economic development negotiations, consultation, consultation with city attorney, bail development agreement, Section 55107-1, consultation with attorney, half and associates litigation, 55107-1, consultation with attorney, deliberations regarding rescinding an opt-out filed in 3M and Dupont PFAS litigation, and Chapter 380 agreement between the city and far-out hospitality for the development of a cork and pig restaurant offering sales tax rebates. We're going into executive session at 6:47 PM. And I think, Pat, we have a couple of motions, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make just a couple of motions to help council to act on a couple of issues we discussed in executive session. First one will be the item 14, the deliberations regarding rescinding our opt-out filed in 3M and Dupont PFAS litigation, and a proposed motion could be moved to authorize the city attorney to revoke the City of Willow Park's requests to be excluded from the settlements in the City of Camden at All versus 3M Company case and the City of Camden at All versus EI Dupont, De Nemoers and Company case.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion as read.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Pat? All in favor? Thank you. Next one, Pat.
Next one, Mayor, is the Chapter 380 agreement between the city and far-out hospitality for the development of Cork and Pig Restaurant offering potential sales tax rebates. And a possible motion could be authorize city staff to negotiate a 380 agreement with far-out hospitality to open and develop a Cork and Pig Restaurant with sales tax potential rebates.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion as read. Second.
Motion second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Pat. City Council comments. Everybody good?
Road construction looks awesome. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it does.
Everybody's doing.
Road, road projects look great. Thanks, everyone, for your service. Mr. Grimes?
I have two announcements, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Fire Marshal John Schneider Charlie and Assistant Fire Marshal Kevin Lockwood both tested for, there's a new certification from the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. Assistant Fire Marshal Lockwood completed and passed the state examination for earning his basic fire marshal certification. He's also working on his last prerequisite to make him eligible for his master fire marshal certification. Fire Marshal Schneider actually completed and passed the state examination, earning a master's fire marshal certification. Both fire marshals, we'd like to thank the council for your support and their development and professional growth. The next council meeting is scheduled for March the 12th. Head on a swivel. We may not have that one. We're going to have, we're going to be short three council members that day, and we may be short a fourth, which would not constitute a quorum. So head on a swivel. I do not anticipate us calling a called meeting between now and then. We will look at a called meeting, if it is canceled, we will look at a called meeting on the 19th. But if that's not plausible, because I know we have some more out for that as well, we'll just stick to the regular council meeting in March. We will have the audit presentation in March at the March 27th meeting, I guess it's.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?